Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council on Monday, November 9th, slightly after 7:00 p.m. at night. And we have the nineteen million views, finance, transportation, planning and development. This will be followed by a special session where we'll have readings of some ordinances. And this will then be followed by an executive session that we have for purposes of discussing pending litigation and collective bargaining. We'll start with the Finance and Personnel Committee Chairperson Reisner.
Thank you, Madam President. We have a few items here on the agenda, third-party administrator, consulting services, renewal. I believe you have someone in the audience to speak to this. The HR Director, Jennifer Galbreth. Please take the...
Odeon.
Odeon, that's it. I'm supposed to have a witness stand.
Thank you. The first request on behalf of the city is to renew our contract for the third-party administrator. United Medical Resources, or UMR for short, is our third-party administrator for our self-funded insurance plan. They continue to do a wonderful job. We are pretty integrated with them. And I'm simply asking for that renewal for 2015 and 2016. I do know that the auditor has requested specific language in the administrative agreement to address the way that electronic fund transfers are taken care of. And I will be mitigating that later this week. Benefit Consulting Services, last year, we began using Snyder Fuller &amp; Stroh for our medical brokerage services. They are acting currently in a consulting role. I would like to continue that for the following year, especially as we get into more of the Affordable Care Act issues. We're getting closer and closer to possibly receiving an excise tax because our plan is very robust. So having their expertise has been very helpful. Again, I'm meeting with them this week to get final information on how we want to proceed in the future. The third and final item I'd like to present is also on behalf of the Athens Police Department. Currently, there is an age limit for individuals who can be original appointments for patrol officer. It's age 21 to 35. We are finding that that is limiting. We have, within the past year and a half, had three different recruitment efforts. It does continually get better. We're extending our reach and our pool of individuals. However, we would like to, according to statute 12441, we would like to extend the upper range from 35 to 40. And here are the reasons. Again, it's going to widen your pool. Secondly, you have individuals who are in law enforcement for a very long time. They're moving to the area. We could really benefit from their expertise. If they're 36, 37 years old, they would not be able to apply and be on our force. Secondly, as those individuals who are getting out of the military, they're 20 years, we would like to start capturing more of those individuals. So I am asking on behalf of the police department and the city for that consideration. Any questions? Yes?
On the... You said, "Just getting ready to get to the point of the excise tax."
Yes.
On our benefit plan. During the past year, even this year, knowing that the Affordable Care Act, what the benefit coverage is going to be, and knew what procedures or what steps have we taken to try to mitigate a lot of that, or to break it down for your deductible to think was part of, that you had to commit in compliance with deductibles?
We are in compliance with every aspect of the Affordable Care Act right now. What I will be doing this week is working with our account executive and our benefits consultants to do just what you're saying. And this is not so much compliance, but what can we do with the plan to minimize cost to the employees, but also be in favor of city finances, at the same time minimizing our chances of getting that 40% excise tax. There has been legislation that has been submitted, hopefully, hoping, we're hoping that that will repeal. But we can't just stay stagnant and decide not to do anything hoping that it doesn't go through.
So, I'm confused. So are we right now at the 40% compliance? I'm sorry, are we at compliance meeting? And are there new standards coming in in 2016 that will change this?
We are in compliance right now. From what I've been told by our benefit consultants, and that may have changed since he presented this a couple of months ago, in 2017, we will be at what they're calling the threshold for single individuals who have our insurance. By 2018, it'll be both single and family. So you have two thresholds. You have one for single and one for family. And for every person that is covered, there is, you multiply that by what value of the health care is, which we use the COBRA rate. And then there's the two thresholds, and I can't off the top of my head tell you what those are. So I will tell you, we're kind of in a tight spot right now.
And I think your 40% excise tax is per individual, too.
Yes, yes.
It's not 140% for everything, it's 40% per individual.
You are correct.
Are we, if we're so close, are we able to renegotiate contracts with unions?
We were successful in putting in language in our contracts that stated that we had to come back to the table based on ACA, because it could be passed on to the employee, it could be a share and what have you. Of course, I'm one of those that hope that it's repealed. But we have to plan for 2017 and 2018.
Right. And actually, Snyder Fuller &amp; Stroh were very helpful in helping us communicate to the unions how important this was. And I truly believe that's how we were able to get the language in the contracts.
I think just to clarify, you don't mean the entire ACA, Safety Service.
No, we kind of lack taxes.
I think that's important to clarify.
Right.
Could you kind of indicate like a drop dead date of when this needs to be figured out? Is that 2017 before the, when does, I know that the Cadillac tax is being kind of eased in, so.
First recommendations are going to be coming or decided upon this week.
Okay.
Now, as far as a three-year global plan, that will be part of it, but that's going to take a lot more work with our benefits consultant, because we certainly do not want to do anything if we don't have to to the wonderful plan that we have. It's a fantastic insurance plan, and I think every employee would agree with that. At the same time, we're looking out, we're looking out for the best interests of everyone, the city, the employees. So I don't have a direct answer for that, but that's our beginning steps.
Not keep eating a dead horse, but I think 2016 is going to be part of the time that certain parts of that plan has to be in compliance, because I know that the insurance I have, maybe it's already there. So we've already done it, our deductibles went up, our COPA's have went up.
I'm familiar with that one.
Yeah. So everything has changed, as far as I know, U has changed, because their policies have changed. And so I think that 2016 is part of, part of the original date, that's when it's changing. So they're looking at, that's what I understood is going to be part of that either you're in compliance, or if you have a Cadillac plan, you're going to get charged that tax.
In 2016?
That's what I'm understanding. Now, Snyder may have, because I've been talking with him, so he may have more better detail on that.
I will talk with his associate.
Councilmember Patterson?
I just wanted to kind of go back to the change in the age for law enforcement.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, because I think that, to me, that's so smart, having served for 23 years and knowing that there's great people coming out at the age of 38, 40, who've served 20 years. It could actually speed up the time in which we're getting officers out of the streets, too, with trainings, especially they come out of what is truly called law enforcement in the military. There's also security police, that's a whole different career field, that they're protecting silos and things of that nature, so they're patrolling the bases. So this is, I highly support something like this and move in that direction. I think it's a light.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Miscellaneous, any miscellaneous from the administration?
No, I think you covered the bonds for the pumper truck, I think it was.
Yeah, we've done that a couple of weeks ago, I believe.
Yes, good. Okay, so that's in your readings, like coming up?
I've got a first reading.
As well as the, you know, the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct.
So I don't think there's anything else right now.
That's all I have.
Then we'll move on to Transportation Committee with Councilmember Pap, the chair.
Thank you. We need to discuss a standard protocol for an ordinance that happens whenever ODOT wants to repair anything within our city. And currently, for many of you that travel on the 682 bridge over 3350, you know that it's had some issues. And recently, the holes were paved again. But they're coming forward and they're going to do some major repair on that bridge. And would administration like to talk about that a little bit more?
Well, I think you hit it. Everybody knows that, you know, they did the patch payment just to get us through the winter, but they'll be coming back in the spring, so they are requesting this. This one, it's a little unusual in the fact that they're funding it 100%. In the past, when they've done work, they've done the 80/20, but they're doing the full it is their bridge. So I think everybody, there'll be some pain points, and we'll work with you next year on getting communication out when doing those, because they'll be doing some work from beneath the bridge.
Okay. So I'm trying to see, is that ordinance coming forward for our special session?
It is.
It is, that's correct. So I just wanted to make sure.
It's kind of a little, it's odd that they titled it painting, because it indeed is repairs as well.
Right. Well, maybe if they're repairing the steel or the beams, they'll go ahead and paint it as well, I assume, because they've been doing that up and down the 33 route here for some time, painting all the bridges. Do we get to pick the color?
I don't think so.
Probably not.
Well, we could have a conversation.
I don't believe so. I think I'll go through three readings.
Okay.
Well, as long as we get it done this year.
Okay.
Okay, so that'll come up later this evening, then. Okay, any questions from council on that? No? Good. Okay. Outside the Box, Member Butler is going to speak regarding that.
Thank you.
Yes.
Just briefly, an update for council members and the public. So the Athens Municipal Arts Commission has been working on a project which is titled Outside the Box. We had a brief presentation in the past, and this is an update. There was a jury effort to then pick some of the images which were loosely defined as Athens-themed, and these are some of the images that were picked that are being on display right now. We also have maybe another image or two go by, and then I'll hold the wrap up here, an example of the material. So, and these will, oh, go ahead.
You might want to explain where the boxes, what the box is.
Yeah, the electrical boxes are, they've been picked and determined by the...
AMAC.
They have been suggested as actually City Council's final recommendation on locations, so I thought we'd work with them.
And I know, I think I also saw that there was discussion with Andy about some of the locations that we may want to be on hold at the moment because of potential future work, like East State Street, four-door, and so there's, we may hold up on some of the wraps at the moment because of potential issues with relocation, although the wraps could probably sustain relocating. It'll be, it's pretty tough stuff, but, so this is an example of the material. And the DPIs will probably be a little bit more detailed and better, correct?
Double. She felt that it gets kind of grainy, it may be hard to see on TV.
This is a bit of an abstract that I was holding up here, as you guys can see. Any more updates on your end?
No, that's it. I think the next art project will be the wastewater treatment plant here, and I think we'll work closely with AMAC to select a theme and then kind of have a vetting by council, have finalists kind of selected to...
By that time, we'll have a poet laureate who will actually say a poem.
Thank you.
Speaking of which, I'd ask, yeah, is that worked with the poet laureate? Has that selection process been...
The deadline is today, so I don't know.
Okay. So I don't believe an official selection has been made through Municipal Arts Commission. And then we would likely hear that recommendation here. Other questions?
How many wraps and boxes are we talking?
It was...
Ten.
Ten?
Yeah, I was going to say between 10 and 12.
Now, if the shape or size of a certain traffic box has to be adjusted, it might have to be minimized, so.
The size of the wrap?
Or we, location. We just have, they have a fairly tight budget, so we'll be looking at that.
So a couple of questions. Just so people understand, these are the big boxes generally located at traffic light intersection.
Correct.
And I would like, if we could, for council to have the 10 sites that have been selected so we could possibly look at those sites as well before making any decision, so we know, not the night of, what the sites are, but ahead of time, so you could send us an email and let us know what those 10 sites are.
It's included in the whole proposal, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor?
Thank you. There is a total of 30. As you recall, we started talking about this months ago, and the thought was to go roll forward on an annual basis with 10 this year, 10 the year after, and so on and so forth, with the hope that maybe there could be some external funding used to purchase the wraps in the future. But this 10 is a good first step.
Right, this is our first 10, correct.
The other comment I wanted to make is people may be wondering why we decided to do this, why this issue even came up. And one of the reasons has to do with several of us on council are very involved with the tag group, which is targeting area graffiti. And these boxes were continually hit and graffitied, and of course, we end up cleaning them up. So the idea is that putting public art there, jury public art, we hope that that will also reduce, if not eliminate, at least on those particular boxes, graffiti. And they're cool to look at. But the bottom line is, I think part of this discussion came out of that as well.
Yeah, I would agree and concur with that. There is some data out there that indicates when public art is put up, it's less likely to be the recipient of graffiti or tags.
And the one thing that I'm going to be requesting from AMAC is they track the Dairy Barn 20th year for 2017, where they want to quilt the town. So I would like to see quilt images. Won't those be beautiful? So.
Thank you. That is all for me. Thank you.
Thanks. Couple miscellaneous. One is, we're proud to sponsor the Veterans Parade on Wednesday, the 11th, of course, is Veterans Day. And there's always a very nice parade, and there's been several things in the press here lately about special items, the plaque at the courthouse and whatnot. So I didn't know if you wanted to mention exactly the times and where.
I believe Assembly is on Morris, 9 o'clock, I think. The idea is to get rolling by at least maybe 9:45, but the idea that the monument on Union at, the ceremony starts at 11, as always. Just as side note, of course, is that there's no recycling delay or trash delay, so don't get confused about that. City Hall is also closed. What else?
Town Hall meeting.
Oh, yes, Town Hall meeting. Okay, yes, that's legal win voters putting out a Town Hall meeting. They've been doing a study, I guess, on homeless veterans, and they want to do that report. They've asked me to actually speak at it. I'm not the expert, but I think it's important that we address that issue. It was brought up from the previous Town Hall meetings. This is actually an evolution from Town Hall meeting several years ago, that there was a need. I'll find, I'll be interested to see what they're, they've come together and put together at this point. And that's at 6 o'clock at the community center, Wednesday evening.
I believe future mayor.
What?
6:30?
6:30, sorry.
Steve, you are also moderating, or are you at the...
I am. I'll be attending and saying a few words.
One other miscellaneous item that I think we just might want to briefly discuss is we've had some correspondence with a Euclid Drive resident regarding, there's a new business that has opened up, and maybe some switch around of other businesses that were there and on that residential street there, off of East State Street, there is a considerable amount of parking going on. It's not a curbed street, it's poorly lit, and the hope is that anybody who is new to that area or either working at that business or going to this new business, Soul Restaurant, would pay attention to people's driveways and all the necessary items. I think that transportation, we can talk about this administratively, but need to kind of look at if we need to help with some new painting or anything to guide these people, these patrons or workers as to what the needs of that neighborhood are. Does anybody else want to comment? Thank you.
Not on that part, I just want to kind of tag on what Mayor Wells was saying. On Wednesday night, you know, they're going to have a forum about homeless veterans, but also during Wednesday is also Green Light Vet Event. So if you have a green light, it would be appreciated to put it on your porch or that or in a window, so that if a veteran does go by, you know, they can see that, you know, it's in support of that, that you're in support of the vets.
Right. So Euclid Drive, I don't know, Member Cochran, if you wanted to mention, I know that's near right where you live.
Yeah, I would just add that I have heard from several residents of Euclid and have shared the communication also with the Service Safety Director and appropriate personnel so that we can look at some potential solutions as far as possibly painting curbs around driveways where paint has been faded. I've sort of added this to my daily walking route so I can check out how things are going. And, you know, I realize this is public parking, and I've pointed that out to residents. So, you know, there's nothing unlawful going on, but there is some encroachment on driveways. And so I'd like to look at how we can solve those issues so that the residents can easily have egress and ingress to their own driveways. Of course, we're happy to have a new business in the neighborhood, and I think, you know, anytime we have mixed zoning like this, we're going to run into situations like this. But hopefully, with some conversation, you know, between the city and business, we can work it out to everyone's approval.
There was a suggestion, I kind of discussed this, but possibly parking at our pool parking, which is usually empty most of the time, maybe the workers at, there is a crosswalk there with a light, maybe they would be willing to park there just to kind of ease some of the strain there in the neighborhood. And I don't know, that would be a reach out from administration to the owner of the restaurant. But that's maybe an option. They're probably walking that far to go down the street to park.
I have a number of thoughts. I did share, and I did a response to the citizen that reached out directly, being told by code that they met code in terms of their parking requirements. Painting season is about gone in terms of yellow curbs, but that is something we can look at again when we get back to the spring. And as Jennifer pointed out, there's not, no real exclusivity to the city streets. I think you're kind of looking at a grand opening, and I'd like to see how the business, as it goes on, you know, if impacts continue and they're deemed adverse. There were some reports, and we are going to increase patrol to make sure they've got their eyes on that, people parking the wrong way on the street, like you say, blocking of driveways, all that cannot occur, so we are going to, it's added to patrol, so hopefully that we can work through this.
Maybe you'll reach out to the owner of the restaurant, just to say, there is this park, I mean, people can park in that lot, correct? Whether they use...
I guess I'm hesitant to say, or some on the spot here, to say to all businesses, hey, you can use our city pool block. It's not like a service that I can provide to every business on East State Street.
True.
And it kind of distance grows, you know, in terms of that, but that's public parking.
Okay. All right. We ready to comment? All right, thank you.
We're ready to move on to Planning and Development Committee with Councilperson Pap, the chair.
Thank you. First up is our contract extension with AEP, which we do, it seems like every year. About just extending, I think that this has been kind of a wait-and-see sort of thing with the aggregation and see how that goes, plus with all the other business that we're doing with the, whatever it's called, Athens Upgrade and such. So I would, along with Paula, we're seeing it extended for a year.
Again, I'd point out, this used to be a 25-year extension. This doesn't say it has to be just one year. We could actually extend it a little bit further, but depends on what changes you want to put forward in the future.
Right.
I don't think we've had that as many compliances as we used to in terms of the tree trimming side of it. And most of that's to do with communication from Aspen as well as AEP.
Right.
So it's not as acute as it was before. They still will butcher one once in a while, though.
Right. Well, maybe that's because, you know, they're seeing that we were displeased and talking about changing the contract radically, and so that might be our kind of chip. So that will come up. Okay. Okay. Yeah.
I just, I would like to mention something in particular about AEP and with its contract extension. Over the summer, I'd been contacted by citizens that were experiencing frequent outages or appeared to be frequent outages. And I would like to say at this point that AEP and John Buck, who is our regional rep, laid out before me an entire plan for how they were going to try and mitigate the power outages in that neighborhood. So there's, I see some great things that they are doing. I think they tend to get a bad rap all the time because my power's out, but for insular repeat incidents, they responded well, and hopefully they'll continue to do so under the future contract.
I think that they were under some pressure from the PUC with mitigating some of their continual bad spots. So, one of the jobs of the PUC.
Yeah, and also one of the things that was happening, a lot of the higherages with squirrels, was actually hitting transformers. And so they started putting these little pronged coils out to kind of repel the squirrels. So we have, I was one of the people that was affected by that. Yeah, so that was one of the things that they'd been mitigating doing that. So, yeah, that's helped a lot.
They do.
Yep. No electrocution of squirrels anymore.
That's right.
Squirrel causers.
So that will come up. Miscellaneous, I have one miscellaneous, two miscellaneous. First, I'd like to remind people about the public hearing concerning the Athens Gardens Department, which is a, the people who own that are putting forward a request to do, to borrow Public Finance Authority bonds, so that requires a public hearing that will start at 7 o'clock next Monday. The Monday after, which is the 23rd, there will be a public hearing concerning the bed and breakfast that we discuss, the planning commission recommendations that we discussed, just to get a, like a first reading from people in the community. So, that hasn't been introduced. I don't see it really being introduced before the end of the year, because I do not want to have any special session or anything on it, so, but I would like, since it's on everybody's mind, so.
Does that include Airbnb?
Well, that would be something that people would discuss. Okay, so that's the 23rd, that will be at 7 o'clock. Let's see, the other miscellaneous thing is, should, want to talk about personal... Let's see. The other miscellaneous thing is, should, want to talk about personal motorized accessibility vehicles?
Electric personal assisted mobility device?
Not, I mean, accessible assisted, what it is, and I think you've seen, is we have these wheelie things that hover like Back to the Future that are being utilized on our sidewalk areas of town that by ordinance are prohibited, you know, prohibited bicycles, rollerblades, skateboards because of the congested pedestrian pathways that we have. While the police chief himself stopped a certain individual on one of these, he said that doesn't apply. So I think we've worked through to where, right now, that it's called electric personal assisted mobility device. So that we're not name branding because there's multiple companies that are coming out. You know, you could go the top end with this name or an offering there to prohibit them because they are causing a problem. And I've even seen the scooter, for not assistive reasons, somebody who's able-bodied but who's just scooting along and rushing down through pedestrians. I heard you say that there's possibility, and I will just have to work with the Law Director's Office about including the term recreational so that everybody understands this is not about someone who has needs and needs mobility assistance. These are able-bodied individuals hovercrafting around. There's even a unicycle, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Just going around Halloween.
Something that we, if these areas, it's only supposed to be pedestrian and, you know, wheelchairs or things for people who are disabled, would it be a better thing to say, this is what's permitted and everything else is not permitted? Because it seems like we're getting along, I mean, it should, this seems obvious that people shouldn't be zipping around when there's so many patrons. So, you know, bicycles. But I'm just wondering if that's, at one point, we may want to go in that direction. I'm not necessarily saying because how do you keep defining these things that are coming out?
I, I like the way you're thinking about that. Just because my only caution is, we have to be careful with the terminology that we use because assistive device, to me, on the Commission on Disabilities, means anything that is going to help assist someone to get around. And these things, it could be misconstrued. So I kind of like the idea of what could be, what is authorized versus what isn't. So feet, motorized wheelchairs.
Right. I just, I think that we can just get longer and longer because every three months, something different is going to come.
So you know, under ORC, vehicle, the term vehicle excludes a motorized wheelchair or any electric personal assisted mobility device. So we do kind of tend to have a conflict if we use that same term. So we'll work with the Law Director's Office for language. We would like to get this at least started through because, again, being challenged on the streets
Yeah.
already, there's just a, I expect them to grow the number of these Back to the Future.
They are.
There's several of them already.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we'll work with that.
I have one question going back to the AEP contract extension. So we are renewing for one year.
One year.
And historically, I'm probably going back to, I think, Councilmember Gosny at a certain point where we were renewing for a year at a time.
Yeah. We were trying for three years and then it was proving difficult to get them to discuss things with us, meeting times and stuff. So we just think that it's kind of a status quo sort of.
Okay. But we have met, they have met in terms of our moving forward with the contract, all the conditions that we had.
It's an extension of the existing.
Oh, extension, good. Okay, thank you.
I do know that the city engineer would like to tweak some right-of-way language. So that's why if we do one year, we know that we can get that accomplished here in the next 12 months.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. All right.
And there's aggregation news. I'm getting my little note here that you want to talk about.
What now?
Aggregation, just kind of clarifying for the community.
Yeah. Essentially, what you're saying is that there was a notice that went out, it was in the paper, actually, it's talking about new customers, new aggregation. That was really a reboot of aggregation to cover the accounts, the student accounts. Realize many of the landlords have the students or the tenants put their utilities into the accounts. So therefore, if we want to pick up more people to actually get into the account, this would be the way to do it, to let them know that they would be, they could be folded into our present electoral aggregation. So that's where the confusion occurred. They're putting out letters, I believe, it was in the messenger, I think, and that's for the PR. So really, it's kind of like a recycle of everything, everybody who fell through the cracks or just terminated as the, were 70% rental. Sometimes the landlord does it, but a lot of them are by the tenant. And that's really why that point came out. So it's, there's a little bit of confusion on that because we're kind of, as I say, trying to catch the renewals of the rentals at that point. And so that's why, yeah, it's good to mention that. If there's any questions, you always contact us or Roger Wilkins of Sopac. Okay?
One question that I, did someone ask me is, where on our bill do we know that you are in the plan?
You should see a generation fee and it should tell you that it's with AEP Energy, okay? Rather than just AEP. And there should be a decrease on it. And there should also be a number saying if you want to compare to other aggregations, you can compare to this number. And again, you can still go to the, I think it's PUCO, apples to apples, and do a comparison and see what you're getting. Again, we have, we're kind of doing it ourselves with Sopac, which is a council of governments, including County, Amesville, Trimble, I believe, right now, and City of Athens. The aggregation got voted down in Nelsonville, I believe.
Yeah.
So that's fallen by the wayside. We still have gas aggregation. We have never really pulled the trigger on. So there's some discussion about that. Part of the issue, of course, there is the gas shale issue, which is always, you know, in the background of what we Athenians have as emotional baggage or whatever you want to call it. So we haven't done anything with that. I'll leave it up to somebody else to do that. Does that answer your questions?
Thank you.
Oh.
Can I just add one point of clarification? I think that a lot of the confusion that comes from these letters is that folks see AEP Ohio versus AEP Energy. And as a consumer who may not be very informed, we don't know what the difference is between AEP Ohio and AEP Energy. Fortunately, I have educated myself through many of these meetings, and so I now understand that. And I urge folks to certainly go to sopac.org if you have any questions. Call Roger Wilkins, who is still the head of Sopac at the moment. Ask questions. Find out the answers. Because if you just call because you think, oh, I've been switched over and I don't want to be switched over, then you may be opting out of the aggregation and not availing yourself of the opportunity to save money and purchase locally, some locally generated energy. We're working toward the locally generated piece. But AEP Ohio is issuing these letters. And AEP Energy is the supplier that we have contracted with as the City of Athens as part of our aggregation. So.
And his contact number is 740-541-5340. 5340. 541. And again, it's, what you're seeing is that AEP is splitting off the generation from the transmission. And that's what you're seeing. We're seeing a fragmentation of who does what within the energy community. Both generation, transmission, and then, you know, distribution. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have for this.
There's other miscellaneous?
Let's see. Water, I do want to mention the water outage. There's going to be a major water outage on the south side, starting at 10:00 tonight. It includes, I believe, our, what?
It could start as early as 9:00.
As early as 9:00, so. Yeah. What you're seeing is that we have a 14-inch boil main where we're doing, redoing Richland Avenue. One of the hydrants that we put in there has a leak in it. And it's a leak down at the bottom where it ties into the 14-inch main. So we have to technically, we have to literally drain the 14-inch main to do that.
Wow.
Which is everything pretty much on Richland Avenue. I was asking, Andy, if you had a count of how many hydrants were put in so we could say one of X is turned, got leaky. But I did not get that number. But again, we're trying to repair it so we don't have to deal with it mid-December and do it while we still have the punch list being done from Shellion Sands and all the subcontractors at this point. It will be.
And you are correct. It is 10:00 PM. So you get home, we get home and get out of here.
Get out of here. Fill up your tea kettle. Take a bath shower.
There'll be a precautionary boil order. So everybody on the south side.
It will call everything Atlantic, Carrington Apartments, all the major apartments. We also have the, you know, Summit on Coast Run, University Courtyard. We have the Fire Department on notice as well. They're all mobilized. Then, once it's completed, there'll be boil orders pretty much for most of east, west, south side, Albany, Andover, Angeles, Angela Drive, and Atlantic, Applegate, Ball, Brown, Brownberry, and the list goes on. I could spend the rest. You wouldn't get home enough to get fill up your tea kettle.
Evergreen.
Okay. It's on our website if you need to know. Okay. And the VSS, several meter sign is also reading it right now on Richland.
No, it's not working. But that's all right because if you head north anyway, you were coming out of the area. But we have our own that we've put up down there. So that sign is up and we'll have boil order signs at different intersections so that they're aware as well. So you know, the repair is going to be just to correct the leak in the sleeve there. And they are going to relocate a hydrant outside of, tonight, over on the Greenbrier side. And there is a hydrant on the Dairy Lane corner that can service the OUN in that area.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just going to kindly ask Scott or Ron to tweet this out in case it hasn't gone out because I know we have a lot of followers on social media through Twitter that might benefit from hearing this.
In the apartments especially, probably.
I'm sure he's doing it in between, neither of the guys.
He just offered the thumbs up through the glass. Thanks, Scott.
Okay.
Any more miscellaneous?
Later this evening, about almost 4:00, I received a missive from Sarah Mars of Business Remix. This has to do with the EPA grant, no, the Brownfield one, I believe. You're well aware of it. She has found out that we have to be the applicant. And this is for the Armory. Again, we've gone through two rounds of evaluation. We have yet to get the report for the Tier Two evaluation. We also have another grant for feasibility. But this is, this would be to apply for a grant for any remediation, the dollars for actually the process itself. And again, it's, we'd have to apply for it. The deadline is December, mid-December, I believe.
December 18th.
Okay. And therefore, such a grant would probably require authorization from council. And so that's why I bring it up.
Okay.
I think I gave you the missive on it.
Yeah.
We'll fill in the blanks as needed, but obviously we need a note.
Do you need a resolution from City Council? Can't be one reading resolution.
I think it's an ordinance usually, maybe. I'd have to check.
Authorizing to apply.
Apply, yes. And accept.
We can also do that under a suspension.
I have a question. As part of this, are they going to do coring samples around the Armory?
They already, they already did. They actually did that last Thursday, I think. We moved the cars out. They went in there. We have yet to get the report on that. We did get some kind of verbal report on the asbestos paint, but we knew that already. So that's all they've seen so far, by the way, from results.
I did hear what you said. It was what, a verbal report, what?
Asbestos and paint removal.
Oh, okay.
Which we knew already. We knew that. They just gave us a little bit more lowdown on that. And if you've read the messenger, we put the bid out for the repointing. It was in the Sunday messenger, I believe. Anything else?
I will move that forward on Monday, the ordinance.
I guess we'll need paint and the insulation. As long as it's encapsulated, though, you never bust it open. Then you don't have to worry about doing any type of repair to it.
That's one strategy. We look at the tile on the basement floors as something we could do with that. The paint, it's a little bit all over the place. And I think some of the paint that is actually newer paint, there's the base, which is probably lead is peeling off. So we're dealing, we'd have to deal with that eventually. Again, I don't know what the strategy will be at this point. But we'll work on it. But the idea is to chase some money to do it so it doesn't come out of pockets.
Any more questions?
I had one other.
You have one other miscellaneous?
Because we're going forward with the change to the municipal income tax code, there's a reference in our Contractor Registration Code Section 11.10 that after having a review by the City Auditor's Tax Administrator indicated that number two should be removed because it's no longer applicable, which is services performed by an individual in the city on 12 or fewer days in a calendar year in accordance with Athens City Code Title 15 Taxes, Chapter Imposition of Tax.
Right.
Because the state code is silent to that. So it's a minor code change language that would clean that up.
Right. I'm sure we'll probably find other things.
Okay, I'm sure.
You know, at some point with all the changes. And then when they find that that tax code is not working out at the state level, we'll change it again. They just love that sort of stuff. So any more miscellaneous?
Thank you.
Okay. That's all for this evening.
All right. We'll move forward with ordinances for third reading. I have Ordinance 9215 and Ordinance Granting a Revocable License to Aaron Bickel, owner of 91 and 1/2 Columbus Road, to allow a sign that encroaches on the city right-of-way. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 9215.
Second.
We've talked about the revocable license many, many times before. This is for a sign that's there on the right-of-way. This has come up again because there was a difference between 91 and 91 and 1/2 owner, registered owner.
We have a motion and a second for approval of Ordinance 9215. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, the ordinance is approved. And we'll move on to Ordinance 9815. An Ordinance Granting a Variance from the City Athens City Subdivision Regulations for Property Located on Columbus Road Owned by Sean Jones to Allow a Lot Split. Introduced by Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. I move that we adopt 9815.
Second.
We've talked about this numerous times. This is for a subdivision. It's pretty much kind of reworking the lines. The ordinance also has a variance. The depth to, depth to width ratio has been a little different.
All right. We have a motion and a second for approval of Ordinance 9815. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 9915 and Ordinance Amending the Athens City Code to Establish Title 17 Municipal Income Tax. And this is introduced by all council members. Ordinance 9815. Excuse me. Wrong one. Ordinance 101. This is an ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce the 2015 year-end appropriations. Ordinance 10215, an Ordinance Accepting Replacement Bus for the City of Athens Transit System Purchased Through the Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Programs, referred to as HAPCAP, and Funded by a Federal Grant. Introduced by Councilmember Pappy. Ordinance 10515, an Ordinance Amending Ordinance 9015, granting a revocable license to the owner of 108 Sunnyside Drive to Allow a Fence on the City Right-of-Way. And this is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Ordinance 10715 is an Ordinance Amending Section 4 Vacations of Ordinance 12214, the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package and Declaring an Emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner. Well now.
I just want to make a comment. My original intention this evening to introduce amendment, amendments to that ordinance. And after working all last week and so on with several other members, I just don't think it would be ready or appropriate to try to amend it tonight. So we'll move on. Second reading.
Okay. Thank you for the update, Councilmember Reisner. We have ordinances now for first reading. Ordinance 10815 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $100,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the cost of acquiring a new fire truck and related equipment and declaring an emergency. And that's introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Sorry. I was distracting.
No, I heard. We discussed this ordinance and actually the one we following a couple times in committee. Ordinance 10815 will deal Ordinance 1015 will deal with paying for it, or at least starting to pay for our new fire truck, which we all had a great introduction to a couple weeks ago, which was a lot of fun. It's bright and shiny, and it's red, and it's a great fire engine, so.
It's not yellow.
It's not yellow.
Okay.
So that's what we're doing here.
Right. Okay, thank you. We now have an ordinance 10915, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $550,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of improvements to its municipal wastewater treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Reisner.
Again, this is, we have debts that have to be paid here, so unlike a fire truck, which is nice and wonderful and fun to look at, this is our wastewater treatment plant. Would the administration need to speak to this?
Sure, that's for the design engineering that we took out, I think we started $850,000, so we're down to $550,000. We would like to continue to pay it through this manner so that it's not rolled in because our wastewater treatment plant debt for the next 20 years is like a 2.6%, and I believe this is.
0.4.
Thank you.
Sure.
So it's cheaper to do it this way for a while.
That's a great rate, yeah. Okay. Ordinance 11015 is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an LPA state agreement for a bridge painting project on Athens State Route 682 and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Pappy.
Thank you. So just as a recap, the state ODOT is going to be bearing 100% of the cost, and those funds come through the state and federal highway administration. And so we are basically, this ordinance allows us to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for painting of the bridge and repair of the bridge. So that's what we're doing. Member Patterson?
Is this, was required sandblasting as well as part of this project, sandblasting and painting?
It could. It's going to be, like I say, next spring is when they'll let that. There'll be some painful moments where the lane will be closed, and we'll work closely, like I say, with the, communicating with the citizens regarding.
And when you're saying lane closing, you're talking about 33 itself?
I do.
Or 682, or the bridge, top.
Correct.
Oh.
But they definitely have work to do, they'll have to access from underneath. They do this all over the state.
Right.
You've seen it before, where it wheels down to one lane, and the bridge and this bar and things like that.
A lot of times they put a curtain, I think when they're painting and sandblasting, they put that curtain around there.
Okay, thank you.
And we can go through a full three reading sign.
I believe so. They just wanted, they wanted it this year, so they can prepare.
Okay. I'm going to take council members back a moment to our second readings, and this is ordinance number 10115, and our clerk of council has realized that we did have a first and second reading of this ordinance, so I'd like us to reconsider that as a third reading tonight with, this is ordinance 10115. This is the ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce the 2015 year-end appropriations. This is one of those annual ordinances that council needs to enact to make sure that we're correctly monitoring appropriated and unappropriated balances towards year-end so we have an accurate count of available money.
So it's actually a third reading?
It is actually a third reading tonight.
Second reading is November 2nd.
Councilmember Reisner, if you would lead us through.
Well, I move to adopt 10115.
Okay, we have.
The reason for all the, you just said so.
Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval of ordinance 10115. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Okay, the motion carries and the ordinance is approved tonight. Thank you. We will be next entering into an executive session, so a moment of explanation before we have the motion to do that. This is when we do close the doors and we'll be discussing items for pending litigation and collective bargaining. Before we do that, we do want to allow a few moments because we know there's some member of, members of the press here, there's some interested citizens here who might want to be in touch or may have questions of council members or administration. So we will be pausing, we'll break for five, five minutes. And a council member would lead us in a motion?
I motion that we move into executive session for litigation and contract negotiation as the.
Collective bargaining?
Collective bargaining.
With what?
With all council members, the president of council, the law director, the mayor, and the service safety director.
Senator.
Okay.
Is it, can I ask a quick question? Is it appropriate to include people that were voted into office for next year? Okay, I just wanted to check with the law director.
Okay. Soon. You will have that.
Soon enough.
All right, we do have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. And I will call, and I will call your names one by one. So Councilmember Butler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappy?
Aye.
Councilmember Fall?
Aye.
Councilmember Reisner, or Patterson?
Aye.
Councilmember Falcone?
Aye.
And Councilmember Canterbury?
Yes.
Okay. So we do have the votes. We will, it is now 8:00, so we'll enter into executive session at 8:00. We will also open the doors after the executive session to pass a motion for adjournment so that if anybody does remain, they have the ability to come back in here if they have any other, if they need to.
For clarification, you said we will enter into executive session at what time?
8:05.
8:05, thank you.
I'll make it 8:06 now. Thank you.